I think Clint is on the phone right now. John is Fisher.
We're being intentionally late. We've got one board member caught in traffic who's on his way. There he is, right here, so.
Hey Brett.
Did it best I could. Did the best I could.
You did great.
Welcome.
Good morning. I call to meet the meeting of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in Alabama Community College System and we welcome you here. Thank you for coming. A great deal of work in preparation has gone into the development of the documentation for this meeting. Today will be our first time to be using iPads for this meeting too, so there'll be a little bit of learning curve involved with that. We're trying to spare a few trees. I want to thank the chancellor, his staff, and all of our college presidents and their staff for all the work in preparation for this meeting. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of adult education, workforce development, and academic transfer. We'll now have our invocation. We've got Pastor Mickey Ballard with us from Eastmont Baptist Church. Pastor Ballard serves as the music pastor at Eastmont Baptist Church in Montgomery. And prior to moving to Montgomery in 23, he served Southern Baptist churches in Kentucky for 23 years. Prior to his college ministry, Pastor Ballard began his professional career at Eastern Kentucky University, where he created and conducted the Vocal Jazz Ensemble and taught private voice lessons. He is originally from Hammond, Louisiana, and holds music degrees from Louisiana Tech, the University of Mississippi, and the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary. Mickey is married to Sue Ellen, an extraordinary pianist, organist, choral conductor, and music educator. And they have one son Jake, who is a choral music educator at Georgetown, Kentucky Middle School. They also have a spoiled rotten black lab mix named Pepper. Pastor Ballard, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, your Son and our Savior, we humbly yet boldly come before your throne of grace with thanksgiving for the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees, for its work and for its dedication to ensuring educational accessibility, educational excellence, and educational equity for all citizens of Alabama. The Book of Proverbs informs us that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. So we pray that your Holy Spirit will fill this place and grant wisdom to each board member today as they discuss, plan, and implement directives, and as they conduct this month's business. May each of them look not only to their own interests but to the interests of others as they execute the sacred trust of education and provide guidance and direction to the institutions under their auspices. We live in a time of uncertainty and chaos where order seems to be at crossroads where rhetoric lacks a harmonious tone. But you, oh God, are not a God of confusion but of order. You have created us in your image and thus have ordained us to live in unity and in harmony with one another. May today's meeting be evidence of that unity and harmony, even in the midst of occasional disagreement, as this board works for the common goal of educational accessibility, excellence, and equity for all citizens of this great state. Oh God bless this Board of Trustees and the Alabama Community College System, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Ballard. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the robe?
Mr. Jeff Schale?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell? Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Boothon, present.
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston? Mr. Ron Houston? Mr. Lev Lundgren?
Present.
Mr. Tim McHarkney?
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Present.
Don't you hear that, Richardson?
Present.
Thank you. Our agenda was distributed in advance to our board members for their review, but we have had another item added late yesterday regarding Shelton State Community College bond issue. I will now entertain a motion to amend and approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the agenda for today's meeting be amended to add item 9A12, Shelton State Community College's request for adoption of a supplemental resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Roan. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Jeff Schale. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of approving this agenda signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. All right, our minutes from the July 10th meeting were distributed ahead of time also in advance to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Have second. Who was the second? Was it Brett? Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving our minutes, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Nobody signed up? Okay. All right, at this point, we will move to our college spotlight, which is Trenton State Community College, item VII.
Good morning, Mr. Baker, our Board of Trustees.
These are my fellow colleagues and distinguished guests. As you see, I'm going to do like Chancellor Baker. I'm not going to be able to follow my script today because I cannot talk. However, I do have a video prepared to spotlight Trenton State Community College and the great things that we are doing at Trenton State today. Okay, we will go forward and I'll just try to talk. And thank you for the Alabama Community College System, Ty and Clint, for helping us to put this video together. For over 58 years, Trenton State has produced graduates to fulfill the workforce needs throughout the river region and in the state of Alabama. When graduates leave Trenton State, they are ready. They are ready to make an impact in our area's businesses and industries, ready to take their education to the next level, to transfer to four-year institutions, and ready for whatever the future holds. Yearly, Trenton State continues to make an economic impact of over $74 million in our region through operations, student spending, alumni, and employment. In addition, the college has supported 1,100 regional jobs. We are continuing to move Trenton State forward as a pillar throughout the river region as we persist to transform and expand. With over 40 instructional workforce and development programs, along with our dual enrollment and adult education programs, we continue to make great strides in our community. Of our region's 25 highest in-demand programs, Trenton State has 70% of them. Transfer and CIS being the highest enrollment programs, the college ensures that our colleges align with workforce needs. Valuing our mission and being impactful throughout the river region, the college has established its first River Region Fame Chapter, Line Worker Training Program, the LPN Immediate Impact Program, and new instructional programs such as Logistics and Supply Chain Management, Medical Lab Technology, Criminal Justice, DevSecOps, EV Maintenance Safety Training, and hopefully at the next board meeting, Data Analytics. Trenton State works diligently to redevelop its campus sites to provide resources needed to the entire river region. We take a concerted approach to offer instructional workforce training programs to benefit the citizens and provide the region's workforce for our stakeholders. This is essential as we transform the college by establishing and reforming our facilities within the river region. It's such an exciting time for the college as we embark upon our third major campus site in Executive Park. This is the first major campus site outside of Trenton and Patterson since the college's inception. This site will house our 15 healthcare programs, culinary arts, and hospitality management programs, and our restaurant Harper's. This will help transform Montgomery and we're excited. Our Trenton campus will become our workforce development hub, which will initiate targeted instructional programs for our community that lead directly to the workforce. This allows us to strengthen our partnerships and align what we're doing as the mission of Trenton State for our community. Again, thank you for allowing me to share Trenton State with you today and for your support. I'm definitely excited as we embark upon our new instructional site and what Trenton State offers the state of Alabama to our river region. I'm hoping our video can play because it was a nice video. But we thank you for allowing us to be here today for your college spotlight. Thank you.
Dr. Chambers, thank you for being here. We'll ask somebody to send us that video where we can all see it.
For over five decades, Trenton State Community College has been a beacon of opportunity, elevating the river region community through higher education and career enrichment. Today, Trenton State stands as the threshold of an exciting future, brimming with opportunities to expand its influence and remain a cornerstone in Montgomery, Lounes, Macon, Bullock, and Elmore Counties. At Trenton State, we're dedicated to fostering active learning experiences that propel our students towards their educational and career aspirations. With over 40 instructional and workforce development programs, Trenton's advantages are numerous, from our intimate class sizes to our dedicated faculty and staff, ensuring personalized attention for every student. With flexible scheduling, including day, night, and online classes, as well as dual enrollment opportunities, we make it convenient for our students to pursue their educational goals. Affordability is paramount at Trenton State, with accessible tuition rates and numerous scholarship opportunities provided through Trenton State's foundation, community stakeholders, employee contributions, and a third good Marshall College Fund. Our mission is clear: to promote excellence in education, ensuring our students graduate with the skills they need for success in the workforce or further studies. Through our adult education opportunities, traditional transfer programs, associate and certificates that lead to the workforce or business and industry training, Trenton State is continually strengthening career pathways, expanding curricula, and forging partnerships. Whether they're through concurrent enrollment with our four-year institutions, the Line Worker Training Program in partnership with Alabama Power and the Alabama Rural Electric Association, Baptist Health LPN Immediate Impact Program, or CDL Training in partnership with Coca-Cola Bottling United, our Fame Partnerships, or our new EV Maintenance Training Program made possible by the Innovate Alabama Network. Trenton State remains committed to impactful programs that provide pathways to lucrative careers. Serving the river region and its military community, Trenton State remains pivotal in community partnerships, which engages our veterans as well as students at the Community College of the Air Force GEM program. Through continuation of grant opportunities, Trenton State remains an active community partner by providing resources to nonprofit organizations such as the Mercy House and MAP Center through the NTI grant. As well as collaborative community partnerships with the Heart of Alabama Food Bank, which has allowed the college to open its first food pantry. With several off-campus instructional sites and our flagship locations at Trenton and Patterson, we're expanding further to meet the growing needs of our stakeholders. And now, we're thrilled to announce our newest venture, Trenton State's third site located in Executive Park on Eastern Boulevard. With Trenton State having the largest number of collegiate program offerings and the only training provider for culinary arts and hospitality management in the river region, this renovated site will serve as a hub for our 14 healthcare programs, as well as our culinary arts and hospitality management programs. At Trenton State Community College, we're not just shaping futures, we're transforming communities. Join us on this journey of empowerment and opportunity. Trenton State Community College, today's college for tomorrow's world.
Thank you, Dr. Chambers. All right, we'll now proceed into our regular portion of agenda, item 7A1, under executive legal and public information. This is a recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 610.01, leaves with pay as shown. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt the revised policy 610.01, leaves with pay. It is further recommended that the policy take effect immediately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Lightsy, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Roan. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, it's going to take me to find this next item because I've got to scroll way down here, but. Item 9A1, under Instruction, Research, and Development, Adult Education, Facilities, Physical Information Technology, and Workforce Development. First action item is item 9A1, Adoption of the 2024-2025 Two-Year College System and Prison Education Operations and Maintenance Appropriation. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve the allocation of the 2425 Education Trust Fund appropriation for operations and maintenance of the two-year colleges and the prison education appropriation as recommended by the chancellor. Physical considerations for this: $427,609,000 for the college operations and maintenance, $19 million plus for prison education operations and maintenance, total O&amp;M and prison operation maintenance funds of over $446 million. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Jeb has a motion.
Second.
Second by Valerie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by voice vote or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's unanimous. Motion passes. Item 9A2 is the Alabama Community College System 2024-2025 ACCS Salary Schedules. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees adopt the attached 2024-25 Salary Schedules for the community and technical colleges and the Alabama Technology Network. $7 million approximate unrestricted auxiliary for a 2% COLA and applicable increased cost to fringe benefits. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Ms. Gray.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9A3, Northeast Alabama Community College Addition of Instructional Site. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Northeast Alabama Community College. This site is in Mentone, Alabama, is a partnership with the town of Mentone. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Ms. Chell, second?
Second.
Second, Valerie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9A4, Calhoun Community College Addition of Instructional Site. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Calhoun Community College. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second by Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 9A5 is Recommendation for Action Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Chancellor to Complete Negotiations and Execute Financial Final Construction Contract for Capital Improvement Project at Enterprise State Community College. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Alabama Community College System was established by Act Number 215-125 of Alabama Legislature approved by its law by the Governor of Alabama on May 5, 2015. There's a whole bunch of whereas between this, and now therefore be it resolved that the Chancellor, in accordance with applicable Alabama laws, rules, and guidelines, is authorized and directed to immediately commence negotiations for the final terms and conditions of the construction contract for the above identified project, and upon completion of negotiations to award and execute final construction contract to commence of the project. So moved, so moved, second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor signify by voice vote or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9A6, Trenton State Community College, Trenton Executive Park Campus Renovation for Healthcare and Culinary. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Trenton State Community College to proceed with the project named Trenton Executive Park Campus Renovation for Healthcare and Culinary, Phase II Storefront and Structural Bid. Construction contracts for Phase II shall be executed no later than December 1, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Lightsey, Mr. Rome, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item 9A7, Beville State Community College Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Addition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Beville State Community College to proceed with the project named Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Addition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January 1, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chell, second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item 9A8, Calhoun Community College Alabama Center for the Arts New Construction of Fine Arts Academy and Storage. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Calhoun Community College to proceed with the project named Alabama Center for the Arts New Construction of Fine Arts Academy and Storage. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December 1, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item 9A9, Northwest Shoals Community College Muscle Shoals Campus CDL Training Site. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Northwest Shoals Community College to proceed with the project named Muscle Shoals Campus CDL Training Site. Construction contracts should be executed no later than November 1, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chell, have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, we have item 9A10, Wallace State Community College Hansville Campus Baseball Field and Softball Field Retrofits to Artificial Grass. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College to proceed with the project named Hansville Campus Baseball Field and Softball Field Retrofits to Artificial Grass. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than December 1, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Gray, so a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, we have item 9A11, Lurley B. Wallace Community College Adoption of Supplemental Resolution Approving the Bond Issue. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees adopt a supplemental resolution to the resolution adopted May 8, 2024, providing, one, for construction renovation and equipping of facilities on the Lurley B. Wallace Community College campus; two, for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount not to exceed $6,375,000; and number three, for securing the payment of the principal of and the interest on such bonds; and four, for payment of cost of issuing the bonds. Fiscal considerations approximately $6 million and not to exceed $6,375,000 for a maximum of a 30-year bond with annual debt service of approximately $384,000 per year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chell?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gray, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, last item under this section is item number 9A12. This is Shelby State Community College Adoption of Supplemental Resolution Approving a Bond Issue. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees adopt a supplemental resolution providing, one, for the construction renovating and equipping of facilities on Shelby State Community College; two, for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount of up to $19 million; three, for securing the payment of the principal of and the interest on such bonds; and four, for payment of cost of issuing the bonds. Fiscal considerations not to exceed $19 million for a maximum of a 30-year period with annual debt service of approximately $1,152,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Ms. Gray.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, section number 10, Personnel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with Human Resources, and I am delighted to introduce a few more additions to our staff. First of all, we have Ms. Rosie Otten. Rosie, would you stand up? Rosie is the new Registrar Coordinator with our Innovation Center. She has over 20 years of administrative experience, 13 of which was at Calhoun Community College, where she was most recently the Administrative Assistant for the Adult Education Department. She has a certificate in computerized accounting and an associate's degree in accounting and management from Trident University, and she's trilingual in Italian, Spanish, and English. She's based at our Innovation Center in Decatur. Thank you. Grant Gunn. Grant is also a Registrar Coordinator for our Innovation Center. He has over six years of experience in higher education, mostly at Northwest Shoals Community College, where he served as admissions specialist and coordinator of graduation and transcripts. He also worked at the University of North Alabama in the Registrar's Office and as a graduate assistant. He has a bachelor's degree in management from the University of North Alabama and a master's in higher education administration. He currently serves as a board member for the Tusculbia City Schools, and like I said, he's based at our Innovation Center in Decatur. Thank you. Darlisha Davis. Darlisha is our new workforce coordinator for the Southern Region. She has over 16 years of administrative and management experience. She's served as a bank branch manager and a payroll and benefit coordinator, a business director, and most recently as CDL clerk at Bishop State Community College. She has an associate's degree from Bishop State in health information technology. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's in leadership from Walden University, and she is based at Bishop State. Thank you. Clay Tucker. Clay is our new Governance, Risk, and Compliance Manager for the IT Department. He has almost 20 years of experience in the cybersecurity field. He served 16 years with the Valley Police Department, where he was a corporal and detective sergeant in the Criminal Investigations Division. He served as a project manager and security analyst for Gray Link Technologies. He most recently served for the state of Alabama's Office of Information Technology, where he focused mainly on service delivery and cybersecurity. He's based here at our system office. Thank you. And Alan Wallace. Mr. Wallace is our Regional Chief Information Officer for the Northeastern Region. He has 36 years of experience in the IT field, most all of it at Jacksonville State University, where he served as a computer programmer, instructor, technology analyst, and ultimately as the Director of Enterprise Information Systems. He served the last four years as Chief Information Officer and Dean of Information Technology at Gadsden State Community College. He has two bachelor's degrees from Jacksonville State University in computer information systems and electronics technology, has a master's in business administration also from Jacksonville State, and Mr. Wallace is based at Gadsden State Community College. So please help me welcome these wonderful new additions to the staff.
Welcome aboard, glad to have you all. Next, we'll have the chancellor's report.
Neil.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everyone's doing well this morning, and I'm here to bring an enrollment update. And as I get started today, I'd like to give an update on what happened this past school year, the school year that we just finished, and give a good enrollment summary of that, and then give you an outlook for where we are this fall. So for the 23-24 school year, let's start first with the fall. Our headcount was over 83,000 students. That was a 6.18% increase over Fall '22. Credit hour production was a little over 4.5% increase, over 720,000 credit hours produced by our colleges, and 21 of our 24 colleges saw an increase in headcount. In spring, our headcount was almost 78,000 students. That was an almost 8% over Spring '23, and credit hour production was over 650,000 with a 5.5% increase. And again, 21 of our 24 colleges saw an increase in spring headcount. And then in summer, we had a very big summer, 48,000 students plus 4.77% increase in headcount over Summer '23. Credit hour production was over 340,000, that was a 4.19% increase over Summer '23. And 19 of our 23 colleges who offer summer classes increased headcount from Summer '23. These are big numbers term to term, but when you look at them in an aggregate standpoint, they make even bigger numbers. The unduplicated headcount for the 23-24 school year totaled more than 122,000 students, almost 123,000 students. That is 6,899 more students than were educated in '22-23. That's a 5.95% increase. 21 of our 24 colleges saw an overall increase in unduplicated headcount over the '22-23 school year. Again, it's a big number. You start talking about even bigger numbers when we start talking about credit hour production. For the 23-24 school year, our credit hour production totaled 1,517,255. That is 62,866 more credit hours than were produced in the '22-23 school year, and that's a 4.32% increase. And 23 of our 24 colleges saw an increase in credit hour production year over year. That's a very, very exciting numbers, and of course, credit goes to our presidents, to our student services staff, to our faculty, and to everybody who's working hard on those campuses to make sure that they are enrolling and retaining those students and just giving them the very best possible experience. This was very exciting to look back. Our '22-23 headcount, I'm sorry, our '23-24 headcount, should have corrected that, is the highest that we've seen since 2013-2014. It's a very, very exciting number to go back and see. It's been a long time since we've had enrollment that high. So again, kudos to our colleges. It's very, very exciting to see. The outlook for fall is still very promising. Our applications look great. As of yesterday, we had received over 100,000 applications for Fall 2024. That is almost 7,500 more year-to-date. That's an 8.08% increase with significant increases in first-time freshmen. We're a little over 8% ahead in first-time freshman applications, 7.33% ahead in dual enrollment applications. We are over, we're 1,200 more year-to-date in transfer applications, an 8.29% increase. And then in returning and readmit students, we are over 1,400 more applications year-to-date. That's a 13.92%. That's a thirteen point nine two percent increase. Now, I, I talk a lot about applications for a good, good portion of the year because that may be the only, only thing that we have to go on for several months, but now we have students who are registered and classes are beginning at many of our colleges, so registrations are up year-to-date. As of, as of yesterday afternoon, seventy-eight thousand and sixty-four students were registered for classes. That's fifty-five hundred and sixty-one more than on eight fourteen, a day later, last year, so a seven point six seven percent increase. I had to send these slides to our IT staff last night, so we pulled another report this morning, and we're eight point three one percent ahead year-to-date. But our students so far have registered for seven hundred and twelve thousand plus credit hours, and that's forty-three thousand more than on eight fourteen, twenty-three last year. So again, very exciting to see these numbers and, and just encourage our colleges to keep up the great work. This is fantastic news to be able to report. And then finally, I do want to be able to speak to our workforce and adult education. This is a summary slide that shows for the entire, for the entire year, from August first of two thousand and twenty-three to July thirty-first of, of two thousand and twenty-four. Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-four students had enrolled in workforce programs, including ACE, MAPS, and AMP, Continuing Education, Innovation Center, Skills for Success, and you can see those numbers, some very, very significant numbers, but that totals over forty-five thousand, almost forty-six thousand registrations, because as, as I say at many meetings, those students may sign up for more than one workforce program. But some of the most significant ones in the ACE, MAPS, and AMP programs, over ten thousand students who, who were enrolled in those programs. Continuing Education, over eighteen hundred. Innovation Center, Skills for Success, that's, that's over thirteen thousand in, in one calendar year who were educated through that program. And let's see, in testing and certifications and workforce education, over thirty-two hundred. Training business and industry, over seventy-three hundred. And in general workforce education, over fifty-eight hundred. In our adult education programs, specifically adult basic education, GED, and English as a second language, we had over thirteen hundred GED completers and over, over thirty-eight hundred students who took and passed the Work Keys exam. But that, that totaled in registrations for those programs, over twenty-six thousand. So if you're, if you're doing quick math and you're trying, I joke that I don't do math in public, but if you are trying to do some quick math and you think about the hundred and twenty-two thousand that we educated through our four credit programs, the thirty-nine thousand who were enrolled in, in, in workforce programs, and the twenty-six thousand plus who were enrolled in our, in our adult education, that totals over a hundred and seventy thousand students who were educated in, in the calendar, in the school year. And so we are extremely proud of what our colleges have done and what they have delivered to Alabama citizens. So I'll, I'll take any questions at this time, but, but just, just suffice it to say that we are very proud of our colleges.
Neil, how about getting Olivier and Todd up to the mic? And let them tell us what they think they are going to look like in terms of numbers of students.
Sounds great. Which one of you wants to go first?
Beginning of the fall semester.
He's going to knock my numbers out.
I, they, I did not prepare them for this.
I didn't study for this, so we'll do our best. But no, I, I think a lot of really good things coming together. I think it's the overall efforts that we're seeing at the system office to promote the community college system in general, but really, a lot of outreach, not just by the presidents, but our staff, really promoting the school. The three things that are, are driving Southern Union, and what's remarkable is across all three of our divisions, academic, technical, and health science. On the academic side, about five years ago, we embarked upon a relationship with Auburn University called Path to the Plains, which is essentially concurrent enrollment. Familiar with Auburn, they, they turn away about fifty thousand students per year, which means a lot of Alabama students aren't getting in. So we help them with that. We've always had the traditional academic transfer agreements, but what we did is we enhanced that, what we call concurrent enrollment. Much like dual enrollment, these students are simultaneously enrolled at Southern Union and Auburn. And what started with twelve students in two thousand and nineteen is about three hundred and fifty students now. And our success rate thus far is about ninety-seven percent, that start this and succeed at Auburn. So that's a, a big number for us. The second area is in technical education. You know, the promotion of the skills and the careers that those lead to is starting to sink in with people. We've added evening classes in several disciplines. The last number I heard, we were at three hundred and eighty students, not that long, three, four years ago. We're up over six hundred students now, so close to double. Our goal is a thousand. I think we'll get there. We've added aviation maintenance, which is just unbelievably successful. We've got seventy people on the waiting list, we're fifty students currently. We're looking at adding new instructors. We're starting on the hangar at the municipal airport very soon. And then in health sciences, in addition to adding programs in physical therapy and soon, next week, veterinary medicine, we've been very creative. I'd say we, it's really my, my dean and my department chair, Dr. Shiver. When COVID hit, we were able to use some of those funds to buy more simulation units, the mannequins. That helped us with clinical time. By taking some of the clinic time in the lab, it opened up more time in the hospitals, which has always been the limiting factor for us, and we added something like sixty, seventy more nursing students per year based on that creativity. And then, two years ago, we added evening classes, which added another twenty-four students. That was very successful, as evidenced by our hundred percent and ninety-eight percent and first-time pass rate for NCLX these last two semesters. And starting this upcoming year, we'll add a second cohort to that evening program. So really, just a lot of things coming together. I feel it, I see it, we see it across all of our schools, but these are the best times that I've seen, and I think better times are ahead. That's, that's what's happening at Southern Union.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So about, I think about three weeks ago at the president's conference, the chancellor, as he normally does, called me out in front of all of the other presidents and said, Olivier, Olivier, how, how is your enrollment going to look this fall? And I made a mistake in that room, and I said, Chancellor, we're going to be up twenty percent. And I could feel all of the other presidents laughing at me as I embarrassed myself publicly. So I started texting all my staff right away, we got to have twenty percent, because I've committed us to it. So, so yesterday, we were looking at our numbers as we normally do, and I'm proud to say that we are exactly twenty percent ahead year-to-date as, as we were compared to the exact date last year. So we are exactly five hundred, I think, and seventy-six students ahead year-to-date in registrations for this fall. We're still registering students. What I told the chancellor, the, the point that we're proud of at Bishop State is that in fall of two thousand and eleven, our enrollment was barely two thousand students. This fall, we will be scratching the surface of four thousand students. So we're looking at a hundred percent enrollment growth over the course of three years. So we are, we are thrilled and excited about that. We are pumped. I am publicly committing our folks again, but, but I'm glad that we rose to the challenge. So we're, we're proud to report a twenty percent enrollment increase that we're looking forward to this fall. Thank you.
This is just a sample of what presidents are doing across the system. And I, I didn't prepare them for, or ask them to tell this story. I just wanted to let them have that opportunity. I'm so excited about what is happening, and it's happening because of the staff effort and the presidents leading them. And communities are benefiting from all of this at a level that maybe they haven't always had the opportunities to.
Awesome.
I still got a report to, I got another.
You got another?
Yeah. Ed Lawrence. Now, Ed promised me you didn't have anything to do with the video not working.
Did not.
But you'll take care of it.
We're going to work on that.
Okay.
We're going to work on that. Chancellor, board members, presidents, and the ACCS family, over the last few months, I achieved a bold undertaking of visiting all twenty-four community and technical colleges that we have that comprise ACCS. Visiting all twenty-four was a great endeavor. I learned the uniqueness of each college, the programs they offer, but also a little bit about the communities they serve. Within this weekend next, all of our twenty-four community and technical colleges will begin fall semesters. Some may be even already now. New students will experience big changes in their lives from building new friendships, expanding personal responsibilities, and even learning new career paths. We're going to have graduating students coming back, will experience change in preparing to launch into new career opportunities, stepping into maybe the next educational journey of a four-year institution. And then we even have adult students who will experience life changes in learning new skills for a different industry, maybe even building new connections in the workforce and changing careers. Regardless of your stage of life, change can be challenging. It can be frightening to enter and even frightening to walk through. If you think about it, over the past sixty-seven years, six to seven years, the Alabama Community College System has journeyed through some big changes, especially in the area of technology. In two thousand and sixteen, Chancellor Baker began his mission to improve a unified system of institutions dedicated to excellence in delivering academic education, adult education, and workforce development. His vision was to provide an affordable pathway to help citizens of any walk or any stage of life succeed through quality education and training. Think about it, a community college system where education works for all. With the mission and vision in mind, the change would need to occur, especially with the technology ecosystem for the colleges, similar to the life changes that people we serve will experience in the next two weeks. Our community, twenty-four community and technical colleges experienced major change too. In two thousand and eighteen, we call it our launching year. One ACCS vision was announced and launched to bring unity to the way student information was managed and administered. Illusion Banner was selected as the student information system, and the purpose of the new, new unified system banner was to increase the system's effectiveness and efficiency, leading to an improved service delivery for our students that we serve. The five areas of improvement, accounts receivable, for instance, finance, financial aid, human resources, payroll, and even student services. One ACCS took three years to implement for all twenty-four community and technical colleges, enduring a challenging time for everyone, the COVID epidemic. The migration of all twenty-four colleges to a new student information system in three years was an unbelievable accomplishment. This achievement created the foundation for a better student experience for all those we serve in our communities. Then in two thousand and twenty, we can call it our expanding year. The next goal of change, expanded the student experience with an improved method of keeping students informed of their educational progress. DegreeWorks was implemented to provide real-time degree progress for students, where they can review their academic plans on personalized dashboards. They even have the ability to review any kind of academic changes and how it will impact their educational journey. In addition, advisors at our colleges can stay informed of students falling behind so they can intervene with even tailored support. That same year, a unified platform for issuing college transcripts, badges, certificates, and even other credentials was rolled out to all the colleges. Parchment is the platform by which the students and faculty can manage and publish those achievements. Understanding data is at the core of improving effectiveness and efficiencies within any system and process. That same year, a system-wide reporting tool was provided to transform raw data into actionable insights. Argos was selected to provide that comprehensive view of key metrics through reporting. So whether you're in any of those departments, missions, financial aid, IT, finance, HR, Argos enables those departments to enhance their efficiency and effectiveness. In two thousand and twenty-one, we'll call it building connections. Continuing recovery through the worldwide pandemic, new technologies and ideas emerged on improving methods of communication and engagement with our new and existing students. Target X, a Salesforce platform for managing customer relationships, was implemented for all twenty-four colleges. It provides a much improved method of application submission, enrollment management for recruiting new stor, new students through its recruitment suite. Additionally, Target X retention suite provides the power to increase student engagement. Target X has revolutionized the student engagement process and strengthened our connections with our students. In two thousand and twenty-two, we learned new skills. As our communities were finally out of the COVID pandemic, a new challenge has surfaced in all industries with finding talent resources to join our colleges. A change in learning new skills needed to occur, and NeoEd was chosen to help all the twenty-four colleges make work easier by streamlining the HR processes into one integrated system. It's based in the education sector, and its whole goal was to reduce time to hire, to be able to create a modern and candidate-friendly experience, and to ensure new hire preparedness, even to boost retention and empower employee career growth. Another new tool and skill was introduced that same year, AdAstra. AdAstra's goal was to eliminate some of the manual processes for streamlining, scheduling, calendaring, and collaboration to save time and improve efficiency. Then we entered two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. We call it a new educational journey. As two thousand and twenty-three unfolded, the vision continued on building a system-wide learning management system to provide the same level of excellence with instruction whether the student is on an academic track, in adult education, or workforce-focused. The solution Instructor Canvas delivers a dynamic learning platform with engaging learning experiences for every student regardless of the path they chosen. And these are only the foundation in some of the systems and tools that we've implemented over the six to seven years. Over the past six years, key foundational platforms have been built and implemented. The processes to get where we are today in terms of implementation have been very audacious, in fact, may have seemed impossible at times. The hard work, late nights, strenuous hours of designing, building, and implementing these foundational systems and architecture by the ACCS IT teams is remarkable. But the willingness and participation of our presidents, their faculty, staff, and students who worked in stride to achieve these initiative injects, and objectives have been extraordinary. Certainly, we have all experienced growing pains through the past six years. We're learning so much from our experiences on how we can improve communication, limit disruptions, and the impact on changes, and how we can better serve our students and communities. So two thousand and twenty-five and beyond. ACCS and the community and technical colleges now have a technology ecosystem and foundation like none other in the country. We will have the uniqueness of twenty-four colleges and the power of one. So I want to leave you with these questions that can provide a why to our accomplishments and our achievements. In a recent statement I learned from an educational conference, the life of where we learn, work, and then retire will be going away. How will we ask kids what they're going to do when they grow up, especially when the new careers and jobs haven't been created yet? How will we prepare our students for a future we cannot see? How will we design the courses and the training for a future we're unable to understand? And how do we prepare our colleges for a future education we can't comprehend yet? We have been building in the technology ecosystem and foundation to achieve those answers. We have a passion for students, and our communities will be focused on how we can always make life better. Thank you for letting me give this, this speech. Any questions?
I would say that all of this has been possible because of the success of working together and creating a system, and it's been very, very much supported by the legislative body. Without their help and support, we wouldn't be able to offer these kinds of software programs to all of our schools. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I'm looking for Chris and Sarah. Billy, why don't you come up along with Sarah and just stand as supportive? Because Billy is Sarah's assistant, and he does a super job, and I just want to recognize him.
So after all these enrollment increases and all the great work that's happening, it, board members, chancellor, thank you for the opportunity. I get to start this presentation with a little bit of bad news, not bad news about our system, but maybe the bad news, or, or just news, I guess you will, for the state of Alabama and where we stand, but why it's so important that we do what we do. So with that said, we're looking at the FY twenty-five high school participation rate, but we're going to start with workforce participation first, and good news is coming behind me. So Alabama's workforce participation rate is currently fifty-seven point two percent, which I will say is below the national average. The highest is Utah, that has a sixty-eight percent participation rate in the state of Utah. What contributes to the Alabama's lower workforce participation rate? And I think there's a couple of things, and most of us realize this, but lower educational attainment, and gosh, what, we are doing great things to, to attack that problem. But Alabama has a lower percentage of residents with post-secondary training compared to the national average. So the next thing we're going to look at, above, you know, what that turns into is obviously high poverty obviously high poverty rates in Alabama that I've never, I've worked for thirty years in education, and I've never been around a group of people that have a passion to change that last bullet, the poverty rate, and to get people into quality jobs. This team is just fantastic. Chancellor is just giving opportunities to be able to go after this in different ways. So let's look at the post-secondary going rates, and I do not want this to reflect poorly on what we're doing. Because as you know, we're doing, I think, better than we ever done, and we're doing better than national average based on community colleges. But the percentage rate of high school graduates who are going to college either while in high school or directly thereafter is significant. It's very important to workforce participation. So higher post-secondary going rates generally lead to these participation rates. And what are we, what are we doing, which you hear a lot of, but what else can we do? Alabama's post-secondary going rate is much like the workforce participation rate, fifty-four percent. The national average is sixty-three percent. Chancellor and I talk about this often, and we use this quote together to say, May of every year is graduation day for high schools. Over fifty thousand students graduate, and we call it unemployment day. In other words, a lot of unemployed citizens come out that are eighteen years of age. And what we're seeing is almost half of those students don't have a plan. And you guys, a lot of us have been in the industry, or you have been in the industry, and you know without having some sort of post-secondary education training, getting a job with a livable wage is challenging. So what we're going to talk about is how can we attack this? But these are some of the factors that are considered into, the quality of post-secondary education is very important. Well, we work, and I'm telling you, our presidents and their deans, and I always say we're the rubber meets the road. You go to visit our classrooms, go into those labs, ask the hospitals about the nurses, and if our nurses are as qualified as the nurses that come out of our four-year universities, and they are, we're doing that, and we're doing it well. We have to stay on the cutting edge, like Ed said. But also the availability of jobs, which comes to economic development, and Chancellor's got great plans on that, and also the cost of education. But I want you to think about, and I'm borrowing a quote from the Chancellor here, who is better positioned in this state than the community college to attack those three bullets? And I won't be silent for a minute. Nobody. We can, and we are working hard. And for our presidents, we know that funding, getting people in jobs, the right people in the instructional realms are very important, and it's a conversation here in Montgomery every day. And that's what this presentation is about, how we're here to help them do a better job of getting people employed or the skills to be employed. And it's exciting to see what's to come, so.
So the Chancellor tasked us with some research on how we can improve both enrollment but the workforce participation rate across the state. And one of our ideas was reaching those captured students at the high schools in a more comprehensive manner, and how can we go about doing that? Well, we don't know, but we know you do, because the presidents adapt to the community needs, and we know that you'll be able to stand up to this challenge and prove something that the state is able to lower or to increase the workforce participation rate and make long-term career objectives attainable for every high school student. So we did some research, and as of spring twenty-two, there were more than thirty-six thousand high school students that did not seek any type of post-secondary education, whether two-year, four-year, private, public, in the state of Alabama. That's nearly half of the total enrollment of our colleges in spring of 2024. So what we would like to do is propose a pilot project for the colleges to reach more of the high school enrollment and immediately post-graduation students. We are going to leave it completely up to the presidents on how to do that. We're going to fund you, but it's up to you to increase your high school enrollment numbers. It could be, and what we want to do then is learn from those best practices that the presidents develop and try and replicate it across the state to help, to help all of our sister colleges. So pilot year funding is going to be three hundred thousand dollars for every college. We want to focus on expanding the services to more high school students and immediately graduating seniors, to offer them opportunities to earn marketable work skills and college credit. Funding can be utilized for this focus as it best fits the needs of the college and the local high school students. We do not want to put restrictions on how you use these dollars, because we know it could go towards marketing, it could go towards staffing, program expansions or enhancements, recruitment efforts, scholarships, anything you can think of that's going to serve your high school students and either give them skills for success training, dual enrollment training, or additional co-program support that will get them workable job skills. Thought I had another slide up there, but I'm done.
Any questions?
This is last.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and trustees. You're probably asking yourself, why in the world is Boone up here not in session? What report would I be giving? Well, we're always working, as you know. We're always thinking of ways to better engage with our stakeholders, especially our legislators. So even though we're six months away from the 2025 legislative session, we've already been hard at work preparing, looking towards the future, looking forward to the next session. And we're about to embark on a major effort to get with every legislator prior to the next session. That may be individual meetings, that may be group meetings, but we're going to meet with every legislator to share the good work that's going on, that great enrollment report that you just got. We've got to make sure that we are sharing that same information with our external stakeholders, especially our legislators, before they get to Montgomery to make crucial funding decisions in the next budget cycle. These meetings are not, certainly not to replace the meetings that our colleges have and our college presidents have, and I know that they'll be having those meetings like they normally do each year. But these meetings are really designed to go in-depth from a system level, make sure that the legislators know and understand all of the different initiatives and programs and services that are being done through the community college system. To prepare for these meetings, we asked all of our college presidents to put together a top ten list of achievements that they have seen at their colleges over the last year. We've received that information back from our presidents. They did a fantastic job putting that together. So I believe you all have some folders in front of you with different pieces of information. On the right-hand side of your folder is a very large document that is all of the information we received from the colleges on their top ten list, as well as a kind of a Cliff Notes version that details all of that in an easier-to-read format. But we want you all to have a copy of that. We thought that was very important for you all to see all of the great work that's taking place at our colleges. And we're going to use this information, especially as we start these meetings with our legislators. We're going to start those meetings next month and work through the end of the year, and certainly if we have any leftover after that, we'll get them done in January before the next session starts. On the left-hand side of your folders, you'll see some other information that we've provided for you. These are other documents that have been prepared that highlight our new slogan, "Make Life Better." You've heard it mentioned several times already today. But when you just boil everything down that we do, the daily mission for us at the system and our colleges is to make life better for people. So that's, you're going to see that slogan being used in our advertising and marketing moving forward. So you'll see a, in your folders, you'll see a one-page Fast Fact sheet. It's kind of an overall collection of information about our community colleges. You'll see a push card that has lots of little QR codes on them, and that's to direct so you can get even more specific information about programs and services that we offer. Lastly, you'll see a document that highlights a lot of the workforce development, capital improvement projects that's going on across the state that you all have approved. We've got a lot going on. There's almost five hundred and sixty million dollars worth of ongoing capital improvement projects related to workforce development. And so this document highlights several of those high-profile projects that are ongoing. So we wanted to make sure you all, you know, had a copy of all this information. Please feel free to use these materials if you all have meetings with different stakeholders to discuss all the achievements and initiatives that we have going on. As we move forward with these legislative meetings, we'll keep you in the loop on how they're going and any additional follow-up that may be needed. And also, I would welcome your participation in any of these meetings if you're available, and certainly as we finalize the schedule of where we'll be in the state and what days and all, we'll let you know. And if you can participate, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you for all the support you provide to us. Looking forward to getting these meetings started. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That's it. Chancellor, we like it when you have your report there. That's good information from Neil, Ed, Olivier, Todd, Chris, Sarah, Billy, and Boone. Thank you all for all the information you brought to us. Appreciate it. Next is item number twelve, committee reports, and I know we have a personnel committee report from Ms. Valerie Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Schell, and Chairman Rogers, we had meetings, and we recommend a Fourth Amendment to Chancellor Baker's employment contract. This amendment extends the contract to December the thirty-first, 2028. This amendment includes an automatic renewal clause, so as to provide for a continuing four-year term. As reported, you all may recall in our February fourteenth board meeting, I gave the Chancellor's performance rating, which was exceptional, with a composite score of four-point-eight-seven on a scale of one to five, with five being the perfect score. Based on his exceptional performance, the Personnel Committee, we would like to recommend a fifteen percent salary increase effective September the first. The Chancellor's contract of employment will be amended to reflect the above recommendations. And at this time, I would ask you, Mr. Chairman, to ask for a motion of the board to approve an extension of the Chancellor's contract to December the thirty-first, 2028, with an automatic renewal clause and a fifteen percent salary increase in accordance with the Fourth Amendment to his contract of employment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Does it move? Is it a second? Is it a second? Is yours a second? Yours is motion, right?
Yes.
So you're a second. Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chancellor, I'd just like to say what a pleasure it is to work with you. And just based upon the reports, and off-the-cuff reports today from all of our presidents, it's truly a remarkable team, and you're a fantastic leader.
Amen. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Chancellor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll follow this meeting with our work session here in just a few minutes, right here in this room. And our next Board Trustees' meeting will be September eleventh at ten a.m. here in this room. Do I have a motion? We adjourn. Does it move? Okay, have a motion, a second.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. We adjourn for ten minutes, the work session. Thank you. 10 minutes, the work session. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Okay.
We'll get us back, get started here in a minute. David, if we'll pause for just a minute, we got a couple on their way back.
We're solving the world's problems just right outside here.
All right. David?
Thank you.
Good morning to you, to you all.
Good morning.
The first three items of the work session.
Agenda today are all mission statements, and I'll take them together. The first is for Northeast Alabama, Wallace-Selma, and Bishop State. These all are requests for review and approval of the college's current mission statement. Are there any questions relating to the three mission statements for Northeast, Wallace-Selma, and Bishop? The next item is Jefferson State's request that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution naming the Nursing and Allied Health Wing of the St. Clair Pell City Campus as the Dr. James H. McClendon Nursing Wing and to add appropriate signage. Dr. McClendon played an instrumental role in the expansion of Jeff State's nursing program to the St. Clair Pell City Campus in 2009 and further expansion in 2017. Dr. McClendon has lived a life of leadership and service to this nation, to the state of Alabama, and particularly to Jefferson State Community College. President Brown has included a draft resolution for the board's review, consideration, and approval. Are there any questions relating to this item? Thank you.
Instruction, Research, and Develop.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm excited this morning to present the following three action items for the proposed allocation of industry certification initiative funds that support important workforce initiatives and programs at our colleges. For FY25, the legislature has allocated $9.6 million to ICI and Forecourt.
We're off, off the agenda. We're out of, we're out of order. The next items related to some new educational programs at four colleges and the workforce development items. I'll point after that.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We're on item five, Coastal Alabama Community College. Is there anyone here from Coastal? Dr. Milner? Hold that thought, Barry.
We didn't jump up here fast enough. I apologize. So Chancellor Baker, members of our Board of Trustees, Coastal Alabama Community College has worked diligently through our Dean of Career and Technical Education, Linda Grant, in establishing a mechatronics program that we would ask for you to vote upon at our September 11th meeting. The big thing about this is we've worked diligently with business and industry to identify this as a program in need. And in addition, we are doing this in conjunction with Baldwin County Schools, Baldwin Preparatory Academy, which is their new state-of-the-art school. And it's gonna be something that benefits our students in immediately entering the workforce and having the ability to attain their associate's degree upon completion. And we just ask you, consider approving this at your September 11th board meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Milner.
Thank you.
Next, item number six, Gasson State Community College Associate Applied Science for Surgical Technology.
Chancellor Baker, Chairman Rogers, members of the board, it's my privilege today to present the application for the Associate Applied Science for Surgical Technology for Gasson State Community College. So when we start thinking about surgical tech, it is a program that basically is a health profession that's very crucial, a part of any surgical team. One of the things that you look for when you're looking with surgical tech, you have to think about their duties. Well, when it comes to pre-surgery, a lot of times they're preparing the operating room to get for the instruments, sterile, setting up sterile fields, and things of this nature. They're also, during the surgery, they're also handing those particular instruments to the particular surgeon and nurses that may need them. And when it comes to post-surgery, following all the procedures and everything is done, they're preparing wounds, covering, bandaging wounds, I should say, but they're also providing instruments, and they're also providing, county instruments, but they're also providing post-educational care. So, the Associate Applied Science, when it comes to this particular program, Gasson State has done a great job identifying the workforce need in Region Two with this growing in-demand statewide. The Bureau of Labor and Statistics projected basically employment, a growth of 5% to 9% between 2020 and 2023, and the A-triple-C-P occupational demand is about 155 annual opens for surgical technologists across the state. When you start looking at the program itself, Gasson offered a certificate program. However, the two accrediting agencies that now require them, starting back in 2021, required the guidelines to offer a Associate of Applied Science degree. With that, Gasson has basically started the initial program, seeking for programmatic accreditation through these two agencies, and they're going to, prior to accepting their students. They're gonna have one full-time faculty to be hired, basically getting everything in place to meet the standards for the accreditation. They're also gonna require some new equipment, even though they already have the facility in place, but just to meet, just to bring everything up to date for the standards. The certification is going to be basically portable across all seven regions, and they also have the potential to implement a dual enrollment option if they wanted to explore central sterile processing, which allows students to basically, they're going to be the ones that's basically cleaning all the sterile instruments prior to the surgical technologists bringing them into the surgical ward for the particular procedure. So that is an option that's out there as well. When we start thinking about the letters of support, Dr. Murphy and her faculty did an excellent job receiving these letters of support from two of the major healthcare facilities there, with the River View Regional Medical and Gasson Regional Medical Center as well. This program has been recommended for approval by AIC and will be on their September agenda. Pending any questions, that ends my report for Gasson State Community College application for the AES in surgical technology.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have Trinum State Community College Associate Applied Science Data Analytics.
Good morning. My name is Brad Fricks, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Vice President and VP of Instructional Services at Trinum State. We're asking for approval at the next board meeting for a new Associate of Applied Science degree in data analytics to be implemented in the spring of 2025. This new program will be part of our Computer Information Systems Department. As you all know, the foundation, or one of the foundations of a business's or organization's success is its use of data. And today's organizations are not lacking data, but they need experts to help them make sense of it. Graduates of this program will be trained to acquire, analyze, and visualize data, and then use that data to help businesses make data-driven decisions. And as you're probably aware, data analytics is the backbone of how artificial intelligence works, and that's all the rage nowadays. According to the EDPA, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and the college's industry partners, there's a growing demand for data analysts in Alabama. Data analysts earn a livable and competitive wage with an entry-level salary between $36,000 and $60,000. But then, with two to four years of experience, you can earn $82,000. And then with five to seven years of experience, you can earn over $100,000 a year in the field. This new program does not require new facilities or new equipment. The only cost associated with the new data analytics program is the cost of an adjunct instructor that will supplement our instruction provided by our already existing full-time faculty. It is expected that the new program will cost around $37,000 over seven years for the adjuncts, but the program should earn over $500,000 over seven years in tuition revenue. So we're excited about the opportunity to add this new offering to our already popular Computer Information Systems Department. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chattahoochee Valley Community College Associate Applied Science for Electrical Technology.
Hello, Board of Trustees members, Chancellor Baker. I am proud to speak on behalf of Chattahoochee Valley Community College. My need of instruction could not be here. We're in our second day of professional development, and she's responsible for that, so she's back at the college. But we are proposing to implement an Associate and Applied Science degree in electrical technology. This particular program will be a complement to our current industrial electronics program that the college has already implemented. It is a total of 69 credit hours. We're scheduled to implement it fall of 2025. We're proposing two employees to be able to manage that particular program, one of which is already at the institution, and we will employ one part-time individual to support that particular individual. Our goal is to be able to address the needs of people, employers in our community who are in need of advanced manufacturing employees. Some of you may know that we recently entered into a conversation with some of our community partners to talk about the chips manufacturing industry in the area. And we are tooling up because there is a company, Micromice, that has located in our area that will be addressing the chips manufacturing employment need. We want to be ready. We want to be prepared for that. Our program will be housed in our newly renovated workforce training center. So the equipment for the particular program is minimal because we will be able to build on what is already there that is supporting the industrial maintenance program. And we are also scheduled to be on the September AIC agenda. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have, back to workforce development now. Item number nine, Alabama Community College System, allocation of the FY24-25 Industry Certification Initiative Funds, Existing Industry Training Program.
Thank you. I guess I was a little too excited about announcing these allocations.
I understand.
So the first action item is the allocation of $300,000 of industry certification initiative funding for the existing industry training program. The EITP grant is designed to serve the training needs of existing business and industry by assisting the employers with certain expenses associated with skills upgrade training. They're full-time permanent employees, and this training can include company-specific work skills, safety, technical computer skills, and new manufacturing technologies and equipment training. It's been a very popular program this year. We've exhausted the funding this, this past summer for, for, for existing industry. And, and we're really, really excited to begin supporting employers for this next year. And we've, we've already got a long waiting list of employers ready to utilize the funding, in fact. So we, we do recommend the Board of Trustees authorize the Chancellor to distribute through grants a sum of $300,000 from grants, a sum of 300,000 from these funds. Individual grants awarded by the Chancellor shall be limited to a maximum of $15,000 for the purpose of providing training for existing businesses. This training does require a 50% match by the employer, so they do have skin in the game when it comes to this particular grant opportunity. The second action item is the allocation of 150,000 of ICI funding for the Skills USA Scholarship Program. This has been a very successful program. It's really incentivizes students to enroll in Skills USA. It elevates the student's leadership abilities. It raises the game of, promotes current technical education, and it raises the quality of their education and training through competition. It's been a fantastic program, and the students that win these competitions really do go on and move on to our colleges or to other four-year opportunities and achieve great success through that. The scholarship program offers a $2,000 scholarship to gold medal winners for the career tech competitions that covers tuition, books, and fees at a community college of their choice. And the scholarship encourages students enrolling in the community colleges related to their skill discipline and supports current college students completing their programs. So we recommend the board authorize an allocation of 150,000 for these funds for these scholarship winners, for the 2025 Skills USA Alabama State and National Competition winners. Any questions in regard to that?
Thank you.
The last action item deals with the Workforce Initiative Funds of $6,941,316 of funding from ICI to support grant requests for the Success Coach Initiative and the Workforce Development Competitive Fund grant proposals. The Success Coach program is very aligned with what Dr. Cox spoke of earlier in the work session, the first session, in regards to students that are in high school that don't go on to pursue higher ed after, post-secondary education. That's a significant number. This particular program is in complete alignment because it is targeting students that are at high risk, have been identified at high risk if not pursuing post-secondary education. We had a pilot program that we ran at Enterprise State that had great success for about three years, and before we determined that we were going to scale the program and call it the Success Coach program. Now we've scaled it through this, and we've been able to get additional funding through the legislature to support it. And so these colleges are applying for these programs that really, they're able to target them with a specific touch points, a defined curriculum, and a very defined measurable outcomes in terms of students that actually go on to pursue post-secondary education. And so we, let's see, so the program's objectives include early outreach, informing students about career opportunities and education requirements, and empowering them to make informed decisions, and offering personalized support. The activities include targeting high school academic preparation, post-secondary education planning, financial aid assistance, and career exploration. The performance measures that I mentioned, basically guiding at-risk students in career pathways, increasing enrollment in career and technical education programs, and then placing students in post-secondary education after high school graduation. So those three components are what we are measuring. And then we will require each program to submit monthly performance reports that we utilize to track their progress on these services. In addition, we have the Workforce Development Competitive Funds that support innovative and customized projects that addresses businesses' short-term and long-term workforce needs. And this, the grant proposal process involves the regional workforce councils issuing region-specific requests for proposals, identifying the region's workforce needs. So after that, the colleges then submit grant applications via the ACCS Workforce Grant Application website. The regional workforce council invites the applicants to present before a committee of industry sector experts. We participate in those meetings as well from our team. And then the regional workforce council also provides us with a name and context of all those industry experts that participate on those, so we have a record of that and who was actually reviewing those particular grants. After that point, the regional workforce council shares those scores, shares their feedback with us. We have an internal committee here at the Alabama Community College System that reviews all of their comments and feedback, and then we make decisions on how to allocate those funds to each of the proposals. So the list provided with the action items represents approved grant proposals that include the special population grant awards, which are under the Chancellor's approval and not part of the ICI allocation totals. And we also included other grant awards that include STEAM, as well as the career and technical education equipment grants that have been awarded, so that you can kind of get a full, you know, view of what awards are going to the colleges to support workforce-related projects and equipment. So at this time, I'd be glad to take any additional questions.
Thank you, Dr. Milner. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we have Facilities. Board.
Good morning, Board members and Chancellor Baker. We have three projects this morning to present and review with you. The first one takes us to Coastal Alabama Community College down there to Mobile Bay there at Fairhope. On this campus, Board members, we are looking to establish a parking lot to expand parking at that location. And a portion of the campus that they have there, they have a very nice grove of trees, and they're proposing this parking lot that complements, that will complement an outdoor amphitheater that serves the community as well as the college. The parking lot is designed in such a way that there's minimal intrusion with trees. It will be a gravel finish so that there's water and so forth that can permeate the surface, and hopefully we won't disrupt and hurt the feelings of those trees too much where they die on us. But they do have an approach to trees down there that they want to protect, but they're open to allowing us to put this parking lot in there. We'll also add other amenities such as lighting and electrical service for vendors that come in to be able to plug in and to support those events and so forth that happen there at Fairhope. Board members, these are, we included in there a scope of work and so forth in terms of costs that will complement this project. Those were included in your packet. We'll take bids later this month, and we'll bring those results back to you, Board members, in the September board meeting. Any questions about the Coastal Alabama Community College, the Fairhope Parking Lot Project? The next one, Board members, takes us up to Bevel and specifically to the Jasper Campus. We have located on that campus there in Jasper, a building known as Walker Hall. That building has been vacated for several years. The college has done a wonderful job of repurposing and rightsizing its facilities, and there has been discussion about in the past, eventually, that would we take this building down? Being the good community neighbor that the college is, President Higood has had some successful conversations with the Jasper City Schools, and they have taken an interest in this building and can use it to benefit and to help what they're doing, and continue to have that shared relationship with the college there. So we're in the process of developing, a process of gifting this particular building over to the Jasper City School System. The particular instrument that's being used and developed is a statutory warranty deed of gift. Board members, is there any questions about this effort to move Walker Hall from Bevel State Community College to Jasper City Schools? The last one, we go across the state over to Hansville to Wallace State. On this, at the campus there at Hansville, we have the Bailey Building, and we are looking to make improvements there by increasing the emergency generator capacity for that facility. This is Bailey Hall, and as you look at the bottom side of the building there, you can see the exterior mechanical yard that exists. They have currently 125 kilowatt generator that is in place there. It's old. It does need to be replaced. And they're going back with a larger generator in the space there where you see the arrow, and that generator size will be increased and doubled up to 150 kilowatt. That generator's purpose is to support the life safety systems, but as the demand for IT and other solutions for the campus continue to expand there, as well as across the system, thus the need for the larger generator. As you look at the onsite photograph, you can see the building and the mechanical yard to the left. Over to the right, there is a bit of a green piece of grass in this area right here that is over here, and this is where this mechanical yard will be established. We looked at trying to place that in the existing, but because of the increase in size and capacity of the generator, it will not fit in that space with 125 kilowatt generators exist. And so we'll be going in there, putting in there a complimentary yard and facade and so forth to shield and screen that generator, and at the same time, hopefully minimize the sound and so forth that will come from that generator when it is activated and turned on. Also, part of that effort is a new transfer switch. Those are somewhat complicated and involved that will go into the mechanical room that is just inside the basement there, and then the appropriate wiring and so forth that will support that particular piece of work. Board members, any questions about the emergency generator project at Bailey Building at Wallace State Community College? We'll have those bids, Board members, back to us at the end of August. Thank you, Board members. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mark. There are no other items left on the work session agenda unless we have something else. Any comments from any Board members? I want to thank Ron and Tim for joining us via phone, and I want to thank especially all our people who got held up in traffic this morning, Calera on I-65, for weathering that storm in that big parking lot, finally making it here. So thank you. No further business. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.